Okay, I see by the clock on the wall it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the order. The Tuesday, July 2, 2024, meeting of the Mound Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting. Roll call, please. Jim.
Commissioner Archibald.
Here.
Commissioner Rosner.
Here.
Commissioner Sabstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Chair Good.
Here.
Commissioner Wecker.
Here.
Commissioner Yon.
Here.
And Councilmember McInnany.
Okay, we have one amendment to the agenda. Ms. Isabel Brandt would like to address the commission briefly about a concern she has. I've discussed this with her prior to the meeting, and we will slot her on the agenda after we approve minutes coming up. Prior to that, though, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written with the addition of between items four and five, adding a slot for Ms. Isabel Brandt to speak to the commission.
Second. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on, we have in Sarah's email the June 4, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes with a comment that if anyone has changes, additions, or deletions, please raise that issue first. Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ms. Brandt, come on up to the podium. State your name, please, and your address.
My name is Isabel Brandt. My address is 3367 Warner Lane, Mound, Minnesota, 55364.
Thank you. Go ahead with your comments.
Okay. My paper is called Zero Gravity Skate Park Revamp by Isabel Brandt, and I'm dedicating it to skater boys. I want to start off by saying thank you for your time. I apologize if I come off too strong. I feel extremely passionate about the safety of the city of Mound Minatrista, specifically our public parks. I'm coming to you with very serious concerns of public safety, neglect, environmental racism, classism, and gentrification. I have definitions of these terms to just make sure we're on the same page. Before I start with my definitions, I have an excerpt that I found online from the Global Skate Park Directory describing the skate park that is in our backyard. It's just a basic concrete park. It has a three-foot mini-pipe, four-foot flybox, four-foot mini-pipe volcano, which is also the runway for the flybox, more half-pipes under construction, no grind rails because some kid got injured when it opened, Super America is less than a block away so you can get food, but the police station is very close, so don't do anything stupid. And now for my definitions of public safety. Public safety is the protection of people and their property from harm, crime, and disaster. Neglect is fail to care for properly or the state or fact of being uncared for. Environmental racism is a form of systemic racism that disproportionately burdens communities of color. Classism is prejudice against or in favor of people belonging to a particular social class. And finally, gentrification is the process whereby the character of a poor urban area is changed by wealthier people moving in, improving housing, and attracting new businesses, but typically displacing current inhabitants in the process. I did create a petition that got 30 signatures. It's on change.org. It's called Make the Skate Park Great Again. Who is impacted? People, whether they be Mound or Stonka citizens or new neighbors or people from out of town, love a local watering hole. The skate park in Mound, Zero Gravity Skate Park, is a local watering hole that has not gotten any tender love and care since 2006 when it first opened. It is in dire need of an upgrade, and myself and the local skater population have wonderful ideas. Allowing myself and anyone who wants to be involved to take control over the planning and design of the Zero Gravity Skate Park is what I'm asking for. This involves upgraded graffiti art, street skate style implementation. This includes, but is not limited to, new rails, graffiti, and a bigger halfpipe, working water fountain and shower. It's currently broken. No water is coming out of the water fountain or shower, new drains for when it rains and fills the bowl of the skate park, fresh painted or collaged with stickers, gazebo, more picnic tables and shady areas to sit, and a new public bathroom. We also need repairments to the streetlights because one of them is just blinking. So my formal ask is for the city to allow me to supervise the redesign of the Mound or Stonka skate park. What is at stake? The lives of our youth, the reputation of our town, the representation of our town, and the importance of discouraging gentrification that pushes out those who are on the lower end of the socioeconomic ladder. Why is now the time to act? It's going to be a hot summer, and people in this town who do not have access to the lake, air conditioning, or water in general deserve to have a local watering hole where it is not only safe to be, but also fun to be. In conclusion, I'm not asking for money. I'm asking for permission. I'm asking for attention, and I'm asking the city of Mound to take better care of a public park that sits right behind our city hall and fire department. I am asking to have a formal discussion and the opportunity to share my ideas and testament of what the skate park means to this community in the long term. It is extremely difficult to have MWHs pride when I have to witness bad patterns occur over and over again. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing what gets done in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I'm not sure the planning commission is the one that
Right.
that deals with your request.
That's fair.
But we appreciate your perspective, and you're taking the time to come forward and letting us know about your concerns.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Make sure you go to the city council meeting. They are the ones, I think, that are going to
Right.
have to address your concerns.
You might also want to look at a park.
Parks.
Park board.
Yep. So I've been running into some issues with that, so.
Have you talked to Jesse, your city manager?
Um, he hasn't replied to my last email, so.
You reached out to Jesse.
Okay.
And then, you know, as we talked about before, there is a public comment
Yep.
section on the council agenda, which is probably the best venue for your comments.
Right.
But reach out to Jesse.
Okay.
And I'll let him know that you were here as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Isabel.
Chair Good.
Yes. Young lady?
I was just gonna ask.
I think we have a question or a comment from one of the commissioners.
So thank you for putting that together. I can tell you put some time and energy into that. And I think if we're saying that is the next step to go to city council, or is it going to be the city manager?
She should reach out to Jesse Dixon, too, but she also has the opportunity to go to the council meeting as public comment. But she has been reaching out. They just haven't hooked up yet.
Okay. All right. So I thought I would just offer some advice. So I don't know a lot about that facility, but, and so that's where I lack context of what you're asking for. So when you talk to Jesse, make sure it's clear what's broken, which you gave some very specific examples, but then kind of what you would like to happen. And I think maybe be realistic on the timing, for example, so if it requires.
I think the reason I'm a little stressed out is it kind of feels like a life or death situation. It's just that I've attended many funerals of friends from this town that have overdosed on drugs, and the skate park is a big hub for drugs.
Okay.
But it's being looked at in kind of a negative way. They're focusing more on the negatives of the skate park and not the positives of the skate park.
Yeah. So I guess I was thinking more tactically, like when you're asking the city to do something
Right.
that requires funding, they're going to need to understand exactly
Right.
what's wrong. And I think you said there's a drain, there's a drinking fountain that is probably relatively easy to repair, I'm guessing, but like tearing it up and putting in a drain is not going to be a few weeks, right?
Right.
So like, make sure that it's clear what may, if there's kind of a hierarchy of what could be done.
Yeah, hierarchy of what needs to be fixed.
I think if, yeah, I guess, to me, it sounds like there's this cloud of things that could be done, and if you could kind of break it up into things that are more attainable for this summer and then things that are longer term, that might help your case, just so that Jesse or somebody else like me that doesn't really have any context around what's over there
Right.
can understand what's wrong and what's right.
Yeah. I did make an Instagram for the skate park. It's public. It's called Mound or Stonka Skate Park, and I'm posting a lot of pictures and videos of the things that I'm witnessing that are neglect.
Okay.
Have you talked to the couple that owns the skate park? Because she
I have.
At our
Yes.
last city council meeting, and, you know, she's really trying to.
She is very passionate about her business.
Yes, she is.
And I'm very passionate about
And the skate park.
And the skate park. I agree. I think our visions clash in the sense that I can see the point of view from like a high schooler's point of view, because I grew up here and I graduated in 2016. And so that's, I think that's where we clash, but we're both fighting for the same thing in different ways.
And I know that we have talked to, or, no, police, keeping a closer eye on it because we all know that
So that's kind of what I disagree with, is I think the police need to leave it alone and let artists, I'm an artist, they need to let artists take control.
Well, but if you think there's massive drug problems, how are you going to solve that without getting the police involved?
Well, my emphasis is going to be turning it into a safe, fun place to be, because right now it's not fun or safe. And, I mean, if I'm being honest, drug deals are happening everywhere and anywhere. So it doesn't really matter where the hub is. Kids are going to find a way to do it somewhere. That's just kind of the reality of it. But from what I witnessed, from being here since first grade, I went to school at the University of Minnesota, so I come back and visit family, and just seeing every single part of Mound improve except for the skate park is just really disheartening.
Well, there is definitely within the budget
Yeah. Like I would
of needs.
Hierarchy of needs is important.
But, you know, we appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, thank you.
I do encourage you to come to one of the council meetings, but I would talk to Jesse Dixon, our city manager, first, and just kind of go over it with them.
Right. Like I said, I've been emailing a little bit, and I just, I feel that people think I'm asking for one thing when really just what I'm asking for is to be given permission to just kind of be an artist and redesign it.
Well, I mean, you know, there's pipeline
Right.
between the city, the public works people, and
Yeah.
who want to say that probably can collaborate together.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a
I mean, what the best work.
There are ADA and St. Peter's that have to be met, and that's the concern about, there's a difference between putting art on and replacing elements and making sure that they meet certain
Of course. There's an organization that I've been in contact with called Third Layer.
Yeah.
And they've redone Hopkins and Minnetonka skate parks before.
The city, I mean, the city has staff that can help them with that if it comes in interest and priority. It's just a matter of identifying that that's the stuff.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And I think that goes back to Commissioner Sabstrom's comment, is that those, that part of it, like replacing things and redesigning will take more time than just a few needs fixing things, just one element, redesigning and really identifying what's there and finding the funding, that can take months to years as we try and figure out where it comes together.
So I've done a lot of persuasive presentations that worked, right? So my comments were really more advice about as you go forward here, so you can get a very clear message across. Keep it simple. What exactly do you want? If you have pictures, if you have examples, I mean, those things could really help people understand
Yeah.
what it is you're looking for, because you're going to end up talking to a bunch of people that probably don't hang out at the skate park and don't understand what you want.
Well, yeah. And the difference there is I am talking to a lot of people that are hanging around the skate park, so.
No, I mean, the people you're questioning.
People I'm questioning. Yeah, no. And I hear you there. I think one thing is that from the people I've spoken to in this community that have used the skate park, like it's kind of been a conversation for years and years and years, and nothing's changing. So it's my turn to dip my toes in the water.
Okay. Well, thank you for your passion.
Thank you.
Just one more thing. When you give your talk like that,
Yeah.
what you're not saying is what the problems are you're seeing there and how you think these changes would impact those. Right? You didn't give very specific examples of, like, I didn't know there was a lot of drug use going on there. I don't, not there.
Well, I'm not here to talk about drugs.
Well, and how changing it would impact and make it safer. Right?
And to raise the bar to try to get people so they have a better perception of the skate park.
Yeah. But good work getting, putting all this together.
I mean, I would highly recommend taking a walk over there yourselves. It's right behind you.
Well, it's obvious you've worked very hard on this. Thank you for coming forward and presenting. I think you've gotten good guidance
Yes.
in terms of who to talk with at the city.
Okay.
And onward now.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other comments from anyone on the commission?
Nice to meet you all. I'll see you in the White House someday.
Take care.
Good girl. Okay.
All right.
Okay. We are now at Board of Adjustment and Appeals, planning case 24-06. Review recommendation, variance application for deck stair project 2152 Ashland Lane. Applicant Jay Brothers designed for Zach and Erica Callis, owners. Ms. Rita.
Very relaxed.
All right. Good evening. Rita Trapp, the planning consultant with the city. Just let me get this started. There we go. Yes. Just want to make sure I was in the right case. The variance request for the deck 2152 Ashland Lane. So this property is located at the intersection of Pike Road and Ashland Lane. It is on Harrison Bay. It is a lake shore lot. There is commons in between. You can see that from the area that there is commons. It does, that part doesn't factor significantly into this discussion, but it kind of does orient you a bit. Currently, there is a single-family home with a two-car attached garage. The applicant is requesting a variance to expand the existing deck and construct a two-story staircase down to the yard. This property is in an area guided low-density residential from the comprehensive plan, so the continuing use of the property as a single-family residential is in keeping with that. And the property is zoned R1, a single-family residential. And obviously, as it is a shoreline lot, it is subject to the 50-foot setback on the north side. This project is fairly straightforward, other than the, it's complicated to explain. So it's straightforward in and of the fact that the applicants would like to add a staircase from their rear decks down to their yard. There is topography on the site, and so they would like to have an easier way of getting from the house out to the lake and to their dock. The staircase is proposed to be located on the side of the house, so this view, if you are standing at the lake shore and looking back, this is the existing home, and to the left would be the staircase. The staircase is allowed, according to code, to be up to two feet from the property line, so there really is an issue relative to staircase. The challenge gets in is the fact that we are only allowed to encroach five feet into the rear setback. So the problem is, in order to put the staircase where they did, which is a logical place to put the staircase, because it's around the corner and not impacting the view from the property to the lake, they need to put a little bit more duck on to make it make sense and encroach into that area. So we have allowances, and I tried to explain it in the packet. I apologize if it was a bit confusing. But the way that the code reads is there's a certain square foot you can have for a landing. Because of the way the deck is currently structured and where they want to put the staircase, it ends up that this space that's right next to the staircase ends up being a little bit more than you would be able to accommodate. So normally, this is like on the edge of Sarah and I being able to approve it administratively, but it just tipped over, and so that's why it's in front of you, is because technically we can't. It is a little bit too much of a deck within that area. So they really only needed two-foot variance in order to extend the deck, so it makes sense. And they wanted to complete, you know, square it off and not have to make a little jiggly landing, kind of, it's more expensive, I'm sure. So that's really what this is about.
Rita?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Just before we get too far, could you just, like, maybe put your mouse
Yeah, I'm trying to find the
circle around the portion that we're talking about that's causing all this trouble?
So in this vicinity, it's not all of this, but in order to have this staircase where it is, they needed, they wanted to extend the deck and square this off. But they only are allowed to have this area be a certain size, which I, 32 square feet, so it sticks in my head.
So we're really talking about sort of like avoiding having a
Otherwise, you'd have to go, like, do the landing, come across, do this.
Yeah.
Which is kind of silly. So I totally understand why we're doing this, but there's no way that we can approve it technically.
Okay.
And so that's why it's in front of you. That's just the way it works with a variance.
Thank you.
And this is a variance versus an expansion permit, so that's also one of the differences with expansion permits. We have a little bit more room to deal with, but this is clearly going into an area. So that is the request.
And where does the deck end now?
I believe it ends here.
Okay.
But the applicant should verify. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Now I feel anxious about that, but yes.
I'm representing Jay Brothers Esprit.
Oh, good. I was like, I don't know, Mr. Baker. I didn't, I was focused on the future, not so much on the past at this point. So that's what the request is, in summary. Hardcover wise, the code allows 40%. The existing hardcover is at 39.8%. The last survey drawings that we had, the hardcover was calculated at 41%. So staff has been in touch and notified the applicant that we need to keep it under the 40%. Generally, I think some adjustments can be made. There will be quarter-inch spacing in the deck and the staircase, so it generally can be considered pervious. However, usually at the bottom of a staircase, you have like a concrete pad that it lands on or you walk to.
Perch hole.
Yeah. So we're going to have to work with that, but the applicant has been notified of that. So that's something that staff can work on with them to get to that number, what other adjustments that we can do. So that's relative to the hardcover part of it. We did distribute this to adjacent property owners, staff, consultant agencies, private utilities. There were no comments received. The request this evening for you is to discuss the request. Obviously, there's an applicant representative here that can answer questions that I can't answer, or they may have other comments to make. And then we're asking you to take one of the standard actions, approving it, tabling it, or recommending it for denial. We do have a recommendation in the packet, since it seems like this is a reasonable request, and if we could have, we probably would have looked at it favorably, but we had a limit for what we can do. And the standard, the conditions are fairly standard, other than the hardcover, making sure that we have that. The rest of them are the fairly standard customary conditions that we would recommend. I can answer any other questions if I missed something.
Could you walk me through the rationale for why we would be sticky and hard on hardcover and not as, if we linked this? I'm just curious.
Because our general practice is that when you're at 40%, then you try and stay at 40%.
Okay.
And that usually there's other places on the lot that adjustments can be made so that you can get to the 40%.
Okay.
There's just, it's, you're adding, you're adding something, and so there's kind of a give and take. It's, there's not really a lot of reasons why we couldn't make something work on the site. That's the general reason why. We tend to try and not have hardcover variances, because they're kind of hard to justify. Like, what's the practical difficulty that you can't make an adjustment someplace else to make it come into conformance with it? This is, from staff's perspective, this is different, because the most logical place for the staircase to be is in this location, and you don't want it to block your view of the lake. So it makes sense, so that's why that one is a little bit easier to make a justification, whereas hardcover would be a little bit harder.
What simple action would you take to bring it down to 40% rather than 41%?
Usually, it's about removing hardcover in another spot on the property. You know, making the driveway smaller, removing patio, removing other types of things that are like this.
And have you already had that conversation?
I think Sarah has
Yeah, we have reached out to the applicant. They're aware of that, that they need, that that'll have to be verified as part of building permit review if the variance gets approved. Also verifying what's on site. I mean, it can be changing out, you know, maybe if there's a retaining wall, you can take out a retaining wall, grade it out, that comes out, you know, maybe a sidewalk, changing that out from, you know, concrete to landscaping without plastic, or maybe a previous favor that allows for a reduction. But, you know, they, the key is, is that because they were under the expectations that you stay under, if you add something, you take something out. And that's consistent with our policy. Mound's code, the standard is 30. For lots of record, you get 40. So we, that's been an ongoing practice.
Rita, it sounds like there's opportunities to get to the 40%. That's what you're saying?
Yeah. The staff feels like there's a way that we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions for Rita? Comments for Rita? Okay, hearing none. Ma'am in the audience, would you like to address the commission about proposed project?
Unless anybody has any questions, I don't have any questions to say.
Okay. All right. Further comments or questions from commission members? Hearing none. If you look on page 11 of the agenda, you find staff recommending approval of the variance with five conditions and four findings of fact. Chair would entertain a motion.
No motion to recommend approval of planning case 24-06, including conditions 1 through 5 and findings of fact 1 through 4. Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Planning case 24-07, oh. And ma'am, I see in my notes that this is slated
The 23rd of July.
to be presented to the city council on July 23. Correct, Sarah?
That's correct.
Okay. This is just a recommendation to the city council. I'm sure they've counseled you about that. Okay, thank you. All right. Planning case 24-07, conditional use permit for a new slash replacement library at 2079 Commerce Boulevard. The applicant is a Ms. or Mr. Gensler for Hanover County. Ms. Rita.
All right. Thank you. So the request is to allow or use the conditional use permit process to allow the reconstruction of the library. Hopefully, that's something that you're familiar with. It's been part of a discussion for a while now. The property is a through lot with access on Commerce Boulevard to the east and Bel Air on the west. There is the library building, and they have two connected parking areas. It was built in 1972. The plan is to demolish and reconstruct the library. What is a little bit unusual and does factor into the request before you this evening is that the intent is to try and reuse a portion of the southern parking lot and drive aisle, and that does factor into some of the flexibility requests that is part of this application this evening. The library itself, the building will be replaced, and they have made a lot of changes or proposing a lot of changes to modernize it. They are also, this is, I believe, one of the first, or it might be the first, library to be built to meet the green initiatives of Hanover County. So there's a lot of interesting green features being proposed. So that includes a net zero energy building, a green roof, there's solar panels on the roof, biofiltration and retention of trees. Most of those features aren't really part of our planning discussion, though I'll reference a few of them along the way. The request is for a conditional use permit. We need it for two reasons. One is a library is a government building, and it is located in an R2 zoning district, and so a government building is a conditional use permit. As we reviewed the materials, staff also found a number of places where what is being proposed doesn't quite match up with the city code. And in that case, we do have the ability to use a planned unit development process, which is, process is a CUP, to allow those flexibilities that they have requested. Rather than processing four or five variances, it's easier to kind of capture the whole project in a planned unit development. So that's why the conditional use permit will serve two purposes, and I'll try and highlight where those flexibility requests are along the way. As I said, comprehensive plan, it is guided, public or institutional. There is residential to the north, and there is a church or a place of worship to the south, and that factors into one of the city code requirements, which is why I'm pointing that out. It is zoned R2, two-family residential. The city does not have a public or institutional zoning district. All of the places of worship, city government buildings are actually in some type of actual zoning district, and that's been intentional in terms of doing that relative to zoning. From the guiding on the comprehensive plan, we do show where they are so that we know, but on a zoning side, we actually have them in regular zoning districts. And I don't have to go into the whys of that, but there's a why for that. The proposed library, I think I, I just wanted to highlight a few of the images that they included, one being they are talking about doing elements that are really trying to provide a nice arrival and site feature. It's not just about the building, it's about the rest of the site. So hopefully, you had a chance to look at some of the materials and notice that there's some porches. There's also an overlook or a, you know, there's all kinds of features next to the stormwater pond, and they're retaining the mature trees, allowing a walking path. So that's some of the reasons for some of the decisions that affect our planning discussion this evening is trying to keep that area all intact has meant the parking is now completely located on the south, and it affects our ability to kind of make the space that we would traditionally want for parking, but we're reserving it for the biofiltration, the stormwater feature, as well as for some of the nice features for patrons to use on the site. As I mentioned, there is also a green roof and solar panels, so these are just some images that you may have seen in the packet materials. Setback wise, each of the frontages are considered front yards, and they are required to have a 20-foot setback relative to setbacks. Relative to setbacks for the building, they are meeting all of the setbacks that you would need. There's no request for flexibility. There is a parking area setback request, flexibility request. That has to do with the parking lot currently and is proposed in the future. To be setback just one foot from the property line, it's supposed, it is supposed to be five feet. However, I said that's an existing condition, so they're not tearing up the whole parking area, and so they're not moving it to meet that condition. And that's one of the flexibility requests that is before you this evening. Relative to height, the proposed building of the height is thirty-four feet, eight and a half inches. Maximum allowable height in the R-two is thirty-five feet. This is a one-story building. It's just they have a lot of architectural features that are making it a rather tall building. And staff is working through, they just sent building height calculation information today, and I haven't had a chance to review it. So, but they are not requesting flexibility relative to building height. As I've kind of alluded to, but just to make sure it's clear, they are removing in red the north parking area and drive aisle. They are also making in blue the drive aisle from Commerce to the parking area, a parking area instead of just a driveway. That will, that whole area from Bel Air to Commerce will be a two-way drive aisle, and the parking will all be perpendicular to the building itself. One of the elements that is needed is that the drive aisles are supposed to be twenty-two feet in width, or twenty-five feet in width. They are only proposing twenty-two feet. That is currently what it is today. Though, as you all know, the kind of how you move through that is a little bit different because you do have the two parking areas and traffic coming in different directions. But again, we're trying to retain and be environmental by not tearing out a whole parking area and restarting over. So that is one of the flexibility requests being made as well. Relative to parking stalls, they are providing the number of parking stalls that is required by city code. They did make a slightly smaller ADA stall. So it's only twelve feet by eighteen feet instead of twelve feet by twenty feet. If you noted in the packet, we said that we were going to talk to the building official to just double check. We did have exchange of emails with the building official. They did review the plan specifically at our request relative to this topic. They said there is not a specific requirement from ADA, relative to the length of a parking stall. So the fact that we have a twelve by twenty is not related to an ADA requirement. It's just a requirement we have in city code. What they do require is to have enough space between the two ADA stalls that there's enough access and that that access goes from front to back. And they are providing that. So we do need a flexibility from our code requirements, but it is meeting what the building official says. It should be meeting for ADA purposes. Landscaping, they are trying to maintain a majority of the existing mature trees on the site. And that did factor into the ability to do some of the shifting. So for example, if we were to shift the parking lot, we would lose some of the mature trees on the site. So they had a lot of discussion about trying to figure out which element of the site is of more priority. And so at this point, what you're seeing is what they propose. The code requires about twenty-six trees. They are proposing twenty-nine. There are fifteen new trees. They're preserving fourteen of them. They are matching the kind of the mix of trees that is required. One element that they're asking for flexibility on is the size of the trees that are being planted. They're asking for two-inch caliper instead of two and a half. That is actually a conversation that we've been having a lot lately about how big of trees should you really plant? So the landscape architects that reviewed this felt comfortable with that as a flexibility request. It's for two reasons. One is it's hard to get them sometimes, they're not as easy to get. Also, sometimes trees are more stressed, the bigger they are when you move them. And so actually having a smaller tree works just the same, and in the long term, they will be the same size. So it's something that they felt was an adequate flexibility. We did add a condition about making sure that the ash tree on the site, the ash trees on the site are good, any of the elm trees. So those are just things that we will double check as we move through the process. Hardcover wise, the code allows forty percent hardcover. The existing hardcover on the site is forty-seven percent. The proposed hardcover is calculated at forty-four percent, so they are reducing it. The reduction is coming from the removal of that parking area. They also will have the green roof that is counted in the positive relative to hardcover. The treatment is going to be through biofiltration with swales, and there is notations about trying to provide some information relative to that for patrons so that they kind of understand some of the stormwater features on the site. Screening wise, if you remember at the beginning, I mentioned the fact that to the south there is a place of worship and a house. The reason that becomes important because screening wise, according to the code, we need to screen the residential property, but we don't have to screen the church. And so you'll actually see some of that reflected in what is proposed with the screening because they have little breaks shown. But that's next to the place of worship versus next to the house. There is planting provided in order to provide screening near to the entrance and the exit because you need to have sightline visibility. And then there is a residential fence near Bel Air, and they did include a picture that showed the fact that there is a fence that's taller than we would normally allow relative to them. So that will remain, so just so everybody's clear. And if you need a picture, I grabbed a picture, but. So the fencing wise, you can see an image of what is being proposed. And then the breaks, they'll have potential plant screening between the fence breaks just to kind of break things up a little bit. Lighting wise, they're going to remove all of the lighting on the site and replace it. The proposed lighting will not shed light on the adjacent residential property or the roadways, which is our standard practice. So there's nothing too notable about that. Signage wise, there will be one monument sign that replaces the one that is there today. Hopefully, our description was tough to say the open and close. Hopefully, that made sense. There's just a little LED open and close on that sign. Otherwise, it is meeting the setback requirements and meeting all of the size requirements for the R-two district. The project was distributed to all of our standard agency partners. The only person that responded was MCES, who said, "We don't have anything, so we're good." Generally, we have not heard anything from any of the other agencies. Obviously, Minnehaha Creek will be involved in making sure relative to stormwater that we're meeting all of those requirements. But they didn't have any specific comments for us in the preparation of the packet. So in summary, again, this is a planned unit development because there are a number of areas of flexibility. Generally, those areas of flexibility are pretty specific, meaning they're not about setbacks, they're not about building height. They're really about ADA parking stalls, the location of an existing structure on the site. So kind of things that are either existing-related or fairly less noticeable than normal. So hopefully, that is something that we feel comfortable with. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have about the project.
The drive being eighteen feet versus the required twenty, has that been an issue with regard to snow removal?
So the drive aisle is twenty-two instead of twenty-five. Are you talking the actual drive aisle or the parking spaces?
No, the drive.
The drive. Well, the one good element about this is that it is a through drive. And so they will be able to plow from front to back. And then they probably are going to have to make allowances for where that snow is going to go because they won't have a lot of space on site for it. But it is a straight movement, so that means if no cars are there, it's fairly easy. But I, I'll be honest, staff was, is, I think is, a tad bit concerned about twenty-two feet. That has been maybe the number one comment staff had as we've been reviewing it because that doesn't give a lot of room for turning and backing out and people moving, you know, children and families that are at one end of the parking lot. The challenge is, if we are going to make changes to that, it will affect this very old oak tree that's just next to the parking lot. It will mean more retaining walls. And so it's, it's one of those trade-offs. And we're not able to answer for you which is the right trade-off. So staff has concerns, but it is what it is today. So that part's not changing. It's just there will be more traffic than there is today because currently the traffic is distributed between the two parking lots. And so now everything's going through the one. And so that's, hopefully, that's something you can think about and weigh in on.
Architecturally, it's planned to keep the tree, is that right?
Correct. Right now, they are keeping the tree in the same spot. The retaining wall, I believe, is still there. It's just if we do anything and we make it bigger, then we push into the area. And there's not just that tree, there's some other trees affected. That's the big one that is, that they wanted to save.
You know, I have been to all of the community meetings, and the building is going to be beautiful. And it's always been a packed house. Most everybody that's at the meetings is concerned. I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think we're losing like thirty parking places.
You.
And that is a concern of a lot of people.
Yep.
And so we bring up the reducing the size of the ADA. I didn't know if that had to do with adding another stall. But they have done great measures to make sure to try to hold on every tree they can, every existing tree. But, you know, that is a, I think they said we have one of the busiest libraries in all of the western suburbs. So I know that I'm concerned about the parking and losing so many stalls. And it's a busy area, you know, with residents right outside that area. So, you know, it's going to be a beautiful building, but the trade-off is parking for sure.
Is there any resolution to that?
I mean, they, it's been brought up at every meeting. And because they're getting rid of, you know, they're adding the stormwater area, and it is going to be visually beautiful as you walk in. And I guess it's just something we'll all have to just get used to, or people will have to walk the library.
Well, can you park in Jubilee? I mean, that lot is always open.
Technically, no.
No, because it's not, because it's private.
Well, that's where people will park.
But has there been studies for how many people actually drive there versus? Because I've driven by there before, and I never see the parking lot full.
You know, it's amazing how many kids the library gets. A lot of them are students that are, you know, live in the area.
Yeah.
A lot of people use the computers up at the library.
I just wonder how many people walk there today versus drive there.
Well, you know what? They did have that information, and had it been thinking, I would have looked for it, brought it tonight to discuss that.
But it's been studied, that's been studied.
It's all been studied and talked about at length.
And I would guess that the health of the trees is, I mean, if we're saving a tree, how, I mean, it's all brutal.
That's part of the conversation.
Brutal, but how long is the tree?
The applicant's representative is going to talk more about that. But I know that it was a lot of discussion that they had about the trade-offs. Obviously, staff had conversations with them about the trade-offs. Ultimately, this is what they're proposing. The city obviously is doing an action, a land use consideration, and so has the ability to ask more questions and kind of explore things if it's important. But I, the tree would be healthy if they're keeping it, given how much effort they're putting in to keeping it.
We did have on the website the last meeting that they had up at the library, and they did cover a lot of these questions. I don't remember where they put it on the website, but I recall it was there. And also, if you go to, I think it says, "Do it in Rita." You can go to the Hanover County site, and they describe everything they're doing too.
I'm remembering our other conversations about solar and green roofs and laughing, thinking that we didn't think we had to prioritize maybe sure that it's explicit that they can get used. There's no problems because essentially, we're just silent on those topics now, right?
So solar panels, the way that they're installing it matches how the practice has been, so it hasn't been a problem. Green roofs would be similar, and the fact that that's just a different way of having a roof. Ultimately, might we want to have something? Probably. But at this point, given it's a government building, it isn't a concern that we have, that they're using that, those techniques.
But the reasons that we were considering adding it to the code, the fact that they're not there doesn't block them, preclude them from this.
Correct. The main reason, particularly with solar panels that we wanted to put in, is right now it's silent, which means if you look at the code, you don't really know if it's allowed or not allowed. And we wanted to make sure it was clear for staff. If we did have people that were talking about those other elements of solar, that our understanding was that were not at this point being allowed in the city, that it was clear about those.
And all, all I'll add on this topic of parking from my perspective is that for all my colleagues here, it's very easy for us to look and worry that we're losing parking spots and to kind of, it's a number you can hang your hat on. But just also consider the beauty and the livability of the space that we get from having that extra green space as well. So don't just worry about parking going down, is my take on that.
I'm all for, I just like to say, I mean, I'm all for, for the green spaces, I am. I am concerned about the parking and the fact that there's no alternative that's reasonable at this point for us to make that decision, just to say that it's compatible for the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, I know the library uses, but I think that the parking could be an issue. So from a land use standpoint, I, I'm still kind of on the fence with that. I'm kind of stuck. And, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm somebody who rides my bike all through Mount because I don't use my car. So, but I do know that there's other people who are dependent on using that car. So I, I just, I think it could create some challenges for that neighborhood.
With enhancements of services in this library, do they expect an increased additional parking requirements?
Those would be great questions. The representative is here. That's not a question I can answer.
Because that's right.
And also, I thought, and I don't want to put them on the spot, I thought there were some conversations about shared parking or something of that nature. But that, these are all great things they can provide perspective on rather than me.
Okay, further questions for Rita?
Yes, sir.
People behind you. Questions for you.
Oh, well, when they have a, you'll have them come up and?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
All right. Are there individuals in the audience who would like to address?
Do the applicant, would you mind? The applicant representative?
I'm just entertaining a question about who in the audience would like to come forward.
But I'm asking if the applicant could speak to your questions first and provide the information. Just because then, if people have the same questions, we're going to hear the same concerns, and they might be able to address them.
That's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So will the applicant please come forward?
Go through that advance and whatever you want, certain things you like. Okay, and I have your full subplans to review. Okay.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jessie Baldry. I work at Gensler, the architecture firm, and the address is seven oh six North Second Street, Minneapolis, five five four oh two.
Okay.
So thank you for your time tonight. We are really excited about this project, and we've had just a wonderful time working in this community. So thank you again. I will, I do have some supplemental information about the parking. So it's my understanding that on a day-to-day sort of weekday basis, they're not really anticipating needing more parking spaces because it is relatively, it's not full during the week, right? When it is full is during, on certain weekends, on Saturdays, when they have these community meetings and other group, large group meetings. And Hanover County is in conversations with the church next door so that they could perhaps have some shared parking, which is one of the reasons why we are opening up a few spaces in the fence to allow for more direct traffic between the two parking lots. Yeah, I guess I don't have anything, I don't think more specifically to add. I will say that, you know, saving the trees is important. And it's not just about saving the tree, but what these particular trees are that are preventing us from growing the parking lot to the north. There's also a lot of topography, and there's a mound on the site. And so even just, you know, moving that curb to the north, yes, we would lose the tree, but we would also be eroding some of the existing topography, which is something that makes the site really unique. So just something to think about as you're, as you're weighing all of this in your head.
Okay, questions?
What kind of timeline are you looking at? Just curious, once you start construction, is it a year?
So we are in construction documents right now. We'll be wrapping that up in early September. Demo, I think, will happen starting in twenty twenty-five. And then construction, I believe, will, they're planning to open then early on in twenty twenty-six.
Early twenty-six, okay.
Yeah.
Have you decided where the temporary library is?
Yeah.
You know, that is a good question. I would have to reach back out to Hanover County to, I haven't heard yet.
But there will be a temporary library?
I believe so, yes. I can confirm that.
Your house.
Yeah, I think shared parking sounds a lot better than more parking. But you said discussions? How concrete are those discussions?
Another good question that I will have to, I'll have to just get back with the county on. I haven't heard any updates. I know that they have reached out, and I haven't heard anything negative, so that's good, but I can follow up.
This may be a question for Rita. Where'd Rita go? Oh, she's behind you. I can't see her. Is it possible to, to put parking along Bel Air, where you can actually have parking stalls go right into? You can't do that?
There's a lot of grade change from the curb. I mean, there, there is a, the same curb cut.
From, from Bel Air to the east side?
Yeah, there's, um...
I mean, there's a driveway that goes there right now.
They're asking for parking up here, that you guys have.
Yeah.
He's asking for the, like, right on the city hall.
You know, if you could like curve in a little bit from Bel Air and have some parking spots along the street?
I mean, we can check into it. I, I didn't realize, until I realized, like, we have it.
Yeah.
Generally, you don't do that, but that's a conversation that I guess can be had. Other than the topography, which is an issue for me affecting it.
But part of it, there's already a driveway on the north side.
Yeah, to the north, I think it would be more possible than, the driveway that connects the, where we're showing the connection between the parking and Bel Air, at the end there, you're really going downhill. And so at the southern end of the site, it would be more of a...
No, it's the, I'm talking about the west, yeah, the western side.
Yeah, so, so like, on this portion right here, there's a, there's a pretty substantial hill. As you move to the north, it flattens out.
Yeah.
Where the curb cut is, where the other curb cut is.
All right, further comments?
I think that's a good suggestion, though, and I, I appreciate that. Because I kind of, I'm even thinking of that space right there in front of City Hall. I use that quite a bit to drop and pay my utility bills, and I'm thinking the same concept could apply. If you're just doing, I mean, having some shorter, or another option for people who are just running in to drop stuff off quickly. If there's anywhere to add a couple spots like that, that are, you know, five-minute parking. And they're probably easier, because it's a tight, it's a tight space.
This might sound off the wall, but is there a drive-through opportunity so people could drop off books?
There is an outdoor book drop, but you would have to walk. You have to get out of your car.
Is there a possibility to redesign it so you don't have to park?
Um, not with where the current book drop is. So the, the book drop is, um...
It's right here.
Just only... Oh, it's on the road. How clever.
Well, you can drive up to the current book drop.
I, I mean, the current proposed. So the, the book drop is right here on this plan, and, um...
So you have to park.
The roof, so part of the design here is that the roof is all draining to the south here, and there's some of this bioswale that's treating the water here between the parking and the building. And you cross these bridges to get in. And so bringing the curb up to the building would reduce, right now, we're already, we're very close to at our pervious limit. And so adding any pavement would also be a challenge, just from that standpoint. There, there could potentially, you know, we'd have to talk to the library about pulling a book drop out of the building.
Like a mailbox.
Like a, like a, yeah, like more of a remote situation.
I think that would make a lot of sense, because otherwise, you're going to have to suck up some parking spots for...
A lot of people would like to drive through.
Book drop parking only or something, you know?
Sure.
To tell you, the, the most recent public building that was rebuilt is our post office. The old post office had a drop-off. You could drive up and drop in. This one doesn't. It requires you to park.
Yeah.
It was a big mistake.
Try to go to somewhere to park. I hate to admit it, but that's, I, I like having the drop.
But same with, um, two, three book drops.
Well, I wouldn't have thought of that until you guys brought that up. And like I said, I think that that, that to me makes sense if we, and could reduce, you know, some congestion as people are parking and trying to find parking spots if there was a way to just...
Just to drop the books.
To drop the book, then you're freeing up spots, which could help. I mean, does it mean a librarian or someone has to walk to another part of the property? Maybe. But the congestion could bottleneck quick.
Just in terms of time dedication, though, the amount of time someone's going to be parked in order to drop off a book is not going to consume a lot of parking space hours, I would say.
No, but if it's full and there's other cars looking for spots, and then it's pulling in and out, I mean, I just, I could see it bottlenecking as, as people are trying to do that task.
You're going to end up with people double parking, other parked cars just running in.
Right, it's going to be on a curb.
We, we, a, a lot of our interaction with the library is the, the drive-through, drop-off. We use it maybe once a week. And I think the, the, the fact that we can just drive through and leave when we have 10 other errands, it's, it's substantial. I think, and so pulling something to the very south border, that's just a, a place where you could, you could drive by and drop things, I think that's an easy fix that would eliminate some parking lot congestion.
Also, if it's snowy, icy.
Wouldn't be a major change to the architecture. It might be a workflow change for the librarians.
Yeah, certainly, because now, right now, the book drops go right into their automated handling machine, and so it would add steps for them.
I understand.
But you're already having a three-foot narrower drive-through. So any congestion you can get out of there is probably a good thing.
Okay, further questions or comments?
I understand why the expansion of the driveway, the driveway to the north is public because of that tree, but there's a strip of land to the south. Probably, it's hard to see there, but you can see it in this...
It's very small.
It looks like three or four feet.
I don't think it is. I think it's more like two and a half.
Okay.
And if you noticed on the fence design, we were, because of the, because the drive aisle is a little bit narrower and because of snow clearing, I think we're, we're planning on having the base of the fence be concrete. And so that will be a much more durable, you know, and, you know, snow can kind of move along it, rather than just the wood fence. But we do have to get some, some lights in, in there, and the gutters for the curves. And so with everything, I think we've moved it as far as we can. I can check again.
So it is, it's being reconstructed, so what's there now is not representative of what it will look like? Is that right?
A portion of the, it is being reconstructed at the same place.
Okay. The curb along the south of the property line?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, further comments with this young lady? All right, I know there are two people in the audience who would like to speak, and we'll get you in sequence right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Carrie Emelius. I live, if you could bring up the map. Sure.
Is that one?
Yeah.
Do you want to use this?
Sure.
Okay, Carrie, please.
And then you need to be at the mic so they can record it.
Are you sure? Does anybody not hear me?
But it's, it's about the recording and the tele话说.
So Carrie, Carrie, our protocol is for you to state your address, please.
2068 Bel Air Lane, Mount, Minnesota, 55364.
Thank you.
That would be this property right here. And then I know my neighbor is here with us today. There's a ton of people that park in the parking lot. It is busy from when they open to when they shut. On and off chance, there may be a total of six cars on the north side of that parking lot. There's also all the other parking on the south side. When all of the community events and/or classes or book sales are going on, that is full. They are also parking onto the street. There is parking allowed onto the street here. I do enjoy the thought that somebody had brought up that I, what I took from your comment was perhaps diagonal parking into the library parking grounds, uh, land. So you, you would maintain your right-of-way and be able to pull in at a slant right there. Then you're not imposing on so much of that hill on the south side and able to use...
Can you just face them because of those, sorry?
Able to, able to use some of them. That's all right, that's all right. That. The snow removal, I love the fact that it's going green, but if we salt that to create non-slippery surfaces, all that salt is going to get pushed into the rain basin. And that is going to damage or allow us not many plants to grow there, because they're going to get salted. The existing driveway right now is a one-way, because two cars cannot pass. Adding parking into that will not allow for, I, I just don't see it. So I'm, I, it concerns me that the accessibility to the library is very important, bicycle, walking, driving, busing. So please, please be careful on all the decisions that are made with that. It's a beautiful, beautiful spot with the large trees. Preserving them would be great, but with the new upcoming technology, opportunities that are there for the community, I think parking might take precedence. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's see. Do we have any questions for this young lady?
Anybody?
Okay, hearing now. Thank you. And ma'am?
You, ma'am, not me, ma'am.
Please state your name and your address.
Uh, so I'm Betsy Lang. I'm actually the property owner for 2073 Commerce Boulevard. I live at 2931 Bradford Lane in Mount. And I actually, I don't know where the little, is it this? So I, I, I didn't prepare anything tonight, but I just, you know, I was, I wanted to highlight, so this is the property here. I continually see in these plans that there's kind of a misrepresentation of the, of the land surveys here. This, it's, it says existing shed. There has not been a shed here for, I don't even know how long. The house is not indicated, and the trees seem to move depending on how the planning needs to go. I'm curious about the actual old growth trees that will be removed. And I only was able to see today the plans to remove the trees. And it looks like at least one, but if not several, are actually on my property. And this is concerning to me, because this, if you, if you look here, the house is actually here. This is my mother's house. The property that will be 35 feet high will span the entire length of her front and backyard, so blocking all natural light. And what I was trying to tell her, to reassure her, is that you'll have the trees separating this structure. So if we're now adding trees to take out, especially some very large trees that, you know, I can't get my arms around, it looks like those have been indicated for removal. I just would like to know if they're, what, what the options are for her. I mean, all I've heard to date is, oh, it will be substantially different, but not really any more detailed than that. So I just wanted to highlight that concern, because my mother lives there. She's, she's a low-income senior. It's, it will impact her way of life if she is living in the shadows constantly. And I don't really know where she could go if the property value is reduced significantly, because she is right next to a building that spans the entire length of her property. So it's something to keep in mind. I have spoken also with Hennepin County, and there was some, some efforts to explain some of the light studies they're doing. I think hopefully we'll, we'll meet with them later this month to get a little bit more information. But wanted to let you know about those concerns.
Your property address is 2073?
2073 Commerce. Yep. And I just, I, I have a hard time with these, the land surveys, because the house that's there is 115 years old. It has not been built recently. It should, it should be pretty easy to find. We did some significant revamp, probably four years ago, and did a lot of improvements on the home. I, I did see also on, on the Hennepin County site, there were some land surveys from 2015 and 2019 that didn't indicate some of the trees that are to be removed, because they're obviously not on the property, but they've now been included on the property for removal. So I'm wondering where that came from, or if the line moved without our knowledge, or if there's some reason that our trees should be removed.
Am I not clear? Are you saying trees are being removed from your property?
Well, that's what I'd like to know. I, I just saw the plans to date. It was the first time it was indicated, because all I, all I've seen in applications so far is that trees would be preserved.
So it says contracted or verified trees are within property limits before removal on the north side of, of their lot, of the Hennepin County Library. There are one, two, three, four ash trees.
Yeah, and one, it's indicated there is a twin ash. I'm not sure if that's, if that's the tree that I'm... Sorry?
14-inch twin ash?
Yes, and so that's actually, I mean, if that, I'm hoping that's something else, and maybe that is, if I don't know what a twin ash is, I'm not sure. But there's a, a double tree on my property, which I believe is an ash tree, but much larger than that. And it's definitely not on the Hennepin County property.
Okay, further questions or comments?
I have a question for Rita also that might come back to the, this, is that a good ask now?
Please, go ahead.
Rita, I saw across from where her mother's house is that there's a green box planned. What is, what is that?
I'm sorry, across from? Go back just one second.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this green area here on the top? What, what is that?
That's the green roof.
Oh, it's the green roof, okay.
The top of the building. Yeah, there's kind of two, there's two roofs. There's the higher roof that has the solar panels. And only a single point of that roof is at 35 feet, and everything else is lower. And then the green roof portion is at that same height. Yeah, yeah.
So the left side is the north side?
On the north side is about, I think, 20 feet tall, not 30.
And will it be closed-off building, budding right up? Or will it be kind of open, overhanging green roof like it shows here?
Oh, no, that's inside space. That is all the staff areas for the delivery staff.
This isn't open, it's just showing you...
It's, yeah, there's an open edge on the south side, but not on the north.
I see.
Can you bring up the, well, bring up the elevation too? This is, just before I do that, this, these are the trees that are showing to be removed. And they can be removed if they are on their property. But obviously, there's some need to be verified.
Yeah, I didn't know for your planning, like, which were the most vital to remove, or it's... It seemed like all the removal ones were the ones that we can see.
Well, there's a lot of removal ones here, all the axes are.
Yeah, and that makes sense, because the footprint is there. But for the ones on the...
But often, it's when you do construction too close to a tree and you disturb their tree root, they're not going to survive anyway. So depending upon how the building is getting reoriented. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying that it is showing for removals like you say, but it is noting that they may or may not be on, they have to decide whose property it's on.
And is there, because I didn't see any visual for that side either. Is there, I mean, how do you envision that face of the building looking? Or putting anything there to replace the vegetation, or some kind of...
Trying to remember where in this large place that the elevation is. Where is it getting?
Yeah, I wasn't able to find any of those.
Where are you, where are you getting, accessing all this?
It's on the City, Mount website.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
It is in the package. I think there's a link.
There, there's a link.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this the, sorry, can you pan down a little bit? That's the north end. So Commerce is on the left. So this is the view looking south. So this is what you would see, right, from the neighbor's property, either neighbor's property.
I can describe it if you'd like a little bit.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious, like, what you would, what you think would work well between the two.
I, I can double-check, but I did think that we were replacing some of the things. Because there, it was, we were just, I don't think that we could keep those trees, because the building is too close, because it was in the drift line of the tree, as you mentioned, and the tree is not able to stay. But I think we were replacing some of them with, with the plants.
I mean, if you take out like a four-foot diameter, diameter tree for a two-inch, it's not really that useful.
I will check with the ones here.
Okay, further comments or questions?
I've got one.
Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and address the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the meantime, Rita, is there space for bike parks?
In the meantime, Rita, is there space for bike parking?
I, that, if you know. Yeah, there's, uh, bike parking under the porch next, on the south elevation near the range. Just a second, let me put this back on. So, so we're talking over this? No, down, like, right there, just to the right a little bit, under the porch, yep. How much, wait, wait. Um, can you zoom in there a little? I can, I can try, just a sec, sometimes it's finicky. So there's a bench, and then there's part, so it's like, the bench is on the left, and the bike parking's on the right. Five or six times two, I think, so, tiny boat.
Okay, ma'am, please give us your name and address.
Uh, Mary Davis, um, three zero two one, Iverness Lane. I just happened to come here, I was dropping off stuff to Organics and said, hey, there's a party, I want to come here. I'm just curious, have we talked about how many parking spots there are currently and how many there will be at the end?
I'm sure there's a count on them somewhere.
Twenty-five, twenty-nine?
There's going to be twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine at the end.
I was trying to see if, uh... I feel like in the other lots, it's thirty to forty places that will be removed. But I, I don't feel comfortable sitting next to them at ten right now. We are also gaining some, because currently in the aisle, the first part between Commerce and that driveway is just a driveway, not parking. So some of it's being moved, um, so there is a reduction, like, I'm going to go see in the parking and pass another one. Because we only focused on what you had to have, not on what there was today. Let me go back. Let's see. Forty-eight today.
And it's, and the proposed is what, twenty-nine?
Well, I, I just wanted to reiterate, I think that's a big deal. Um, when I have come to the library, it's always pretty busy, and I usually park on one side, not the other. And, um, I haven't paid attention to it with this, because I didn't know they'd be return, be removing spaces, but I just wanted to reiterate that I think it's a concern. Um, but I, you know, that was it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, comments from commission members? I have, uh, three points, uh, that I've added as conditions. Uh, one would be, uh, consideration of a drive-through drop-off. The second would be consideration of diagonal parking where feasible.
Along Bel Air?
Excuse me?
Along Bel Air.
Yeah, I'm just saying where feasible. I'm not, I'm not the architect.
Okay.
It would just be something to look at. And the third would be to address conditions regarding, uh, pardon me, address concerns regarding the adjacent property, uh, that the, uh, that the young lady brought up. Are there additional specific?
Can we add, uh, looking at feasibility of adding parking off Bel Air?
Okay.
It doesn't look like the slope is that big from Google Maps.
Chair, good, just so I understand, the, the idea then would be to table this and ask for a clarification and not act on it today?
Well, or, or, or we could just have those as conditions that would have to be addressed.
Prior to council.
Yeah, they could bring it back here, or they could address it with, with the city council. Uh, whatever your wishes might be.
I would prefer to make them conditions.
And you'd like to have the answers come back to us?
No.
No.
Whereas if you're an investigation, we don't really have any ability to influence what the investigation finds, right?
Are there any standards with regard to, um, activity in a building and parking required? This isn't a walking community.
Yeah, it's, uh, each parking stalls require for every four hundred square feet of space used. So there's, that's, that's the legal requirement. Usually they go above that, but that's...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that is correct, and there are twenty-seven required here, given the setting.
Commissioner Hill's right. The city code, city codes require what I said in the packet, and they are meeting it, so there isn't a...
This is required.
But, this is your opportunity to influence the design of a project in the design unit development. So there is an opportunity to have conditions and have conversations to try and address concerns that the community sees.
So what would your wishes be?
Oh, I'm, I might be in the minority on this, but I would say I would probably vote against the three, the three conditions you just mentioned. Um, I, I prioritize the green space vision, um, as the commissioners presented it, and I really see kind of the value of it exactly as they would plan. So I would vote no on those conditions.
So the conditions doesn't mean they have to necessarily abide by them, they have to investigate them?
They would just be issues that are brought up as concerns?
Their concerns. Oh, so these would be findings of fact of concerns?
Conditions? Directives for them to investigate if there's an opportunity to change the parking, to add parking without impacting the overall site design?
Oh, so we're directing them to investigate?
Yes.
But not mandating that?
Oh, no, this is, no, no.
I see.
And it, this would be answers to the questions before it goes to the council.
A drive-through wouldn't affect green space.
All right, so they would, they would be conditions that we would forward to staff to consider and get resolved before the program was taken to the city council?
Yes.
Correct.
I, I could support that.
You live with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are there other conditions that people would like to offer? I've now got four.
I'm comfortable with the four that you have.
Okay, um, other, other comments? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion. You might, uh, take a look at, uh, where is it? Page seventeen?
Seventeen eighteen.
Of the packet?
Seventeen eighteen.
Uh, where, uh, staff recommends, planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit. There are, uh...
Nine.
There are nine conditions that were specified by staff. We are adding four additional conditions.
So I'll take a stab at it.
And there, and then, then there's, excuse me, just a minute, and then there are, um, what do we got here? Free findings of fact, okay.
So I will make a motion to approve Planning Case twenty-four oh seven, conditional use permit for Hennepin County Library Project, including the nine conditions on page seventeen eighteen, plus four additional conditions. Um, look at a drive-through drop-off for the books. Consider diagonal parking where feasible, if that will improve the flow of the lot. Address concerns of the adjacent property owners. And, uh, look at adding, if it's feasible to add parking off Bel Air. And then also then three findings of fact on page eighteen.
Okay, hear the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion?
And could we just clarify the third? Is, address concerns of the property owner, what is, what does that mean?
Sorry.
Well, the prob, the, the young lady who came forward, whose mother lives adjacent to...
The, the trees that are on the property.
So I understand the concern, what is our condition specifically? Not that they be addressed, but that they, I don't know that they can be addressed.
Just, just that her concerns be addressed by staff?
By staff, okay.
So may I ask a clarifying question? My understanding is the nine conditions are, the first nine are the ones that are in the resolution. The additional four are things that you're directing us to work with the applicant to have the answers, and suggested revisions to conditions or additions by the time we see the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's how I understood it. Even though the wording kind of makes it sound like it's additional conditions?
I see.
I understand it to be applicant and staff are supposed to make sure that we have the answers that the council needs about what's happening, what could happen if something's feasible or not feasible, so they have better information.
Correct.
Okay, and shared parking we wrote down too?
Oh, yeah, thank you, the shared parking.
You don't have to put it in there, we, we, we're going to still do it.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those nay? Motion carries. And young lady, I suggest you find out where the temporary library is going to be located because that's a question that's going to come up. Yes? Okay, I have been told that Planning Case, excuse me, yes, ma'am?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to share with folks that are here, um, the council's review does include a public hearing. Very similar to tonight, except that it's formal. Uh, we have to publish notice in the Laker, and we also send mail notice to everybody within three hundred fifty feet, ten days ahead. At, right now, we're thinking it's probably going to be at the second July meeting, which would be the twenty-third, but it could, depending on how long it takes us to get through the additional information, it could scooch to the first meeting in August, which would be the second Tuesday. And you're always welcome to call us too. But we appreciate everybody coming as well.
Thank you.
Further comments? Okay. All right, I've been told that the next item, Planning Case twenty-four dash oh eight, uh, has been sponsored by Cheech and Chong, uh, who also offer Up and Smoke as an additional reference for your interest. Planning Case twenty-four...
Young people have no idea what that, they don't know what that, yeah.
I cut the reference, I just can't believe it was brought up.
If we cannot have a little levity in the meeting from time to time, then we are all sunk. All right, Ms. Rita, Planning Case twenty-four dash oh eight.
All right, uh, good evening. As we previewed last month, um, you are being requested this evening to consider an ordinance amendment to address zoning regulations pertaining to cannabis businesses. Um, this came about, just for everybody's benefit, to recap. Um, originally, these rules were supposed to take effect in January first of 2025. However, in the recent legislature, um, they added a new process for social equity applicants, um, so that they could apply, um, and consider having businesses before that January first timeline. So we had originally planned on doing this in the fall, but then when that change happened, which would have happened the end of May, uh, it became apparent that we needed to have everything in place in July. So we are asking this evening for consideration, and hopefully moving forward to next week's meeting with the city council, uh, regulations pertaining to this topic. I would note that we would have an opportunity to make adjustments this fall if we need to. This is just kind of to get things going and in place. Something's not working, or we learn more information, we can certainly make adjustments, um, because most of, um, the applications and the licensing and registration all occurs after the first year. This is a very select group of folks that are able to apply for this licensure, this licensure. Um, so there, and there is just recently issued a model ordinance, um, and so that was coming out as we were preparing our ordinance. Um, it is something we reviewed, um, the city attorney had already prepared a similar ordinance, um, for another city he worked in, so we used that as the model rather than using the model ordinance. Um, but that does exist and something that we are paying attention to. Um, given how we are in Mount, and it kind of, we're all developed, and there aren't a lot of opportunities for some of these businesses, um, we kind of took a more straightforward approach. Um, we have, uh, if you have a chance to look at the ordinance, which is, um, on page twenty-two, uh, we do have some definitions that we are adding to our definition section. A lot of them refer to state statute, um, and the reason for that is we anticipate changes will continue to happen as this gets rolled out for the first time. Um, if you go looking at state statute, um, I went looking, uh, and it is not a direct place, you can go to one place and all, all the definitions are located. A lot of the definitions is actually related, um, to the licensure and the registration, and so you kind of have to dig a little bit to find it. Um, so to help provide, uh, a little clarity, we did include in the packet, I believe, um, part of, uh, the information that was provided, uh, to cities, and there was a nice table, I think this is, what page is that? Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight or so? There's a nice table that explains what all of those types of businesses are, um, so that, that you can find that information. Um, allowable uses wise, uh, the proposed ordinance updates our current use table, uh, and really shows where cannabis, uh, will be allowed generally. Um, we were thinking as staff that it would be allowed in the mixed-use downtown and the mixed-use, um, commercial district, the corridor district, and then the industrial district. So retail-like businesses would be in the mixed-use areas, industrial would be in the industrial area. Um, the one caveat, and something that we do need to talk about a little bit, um, in the new specific standards, is we can, if the city chooses, have a buffer to kind of further limit where businesses can be located. Um, the reason we did not do the C-one district is the C-one district is not, uh, there's not that many parcels that are in the C-one district. Um, they're already pretty developed, they're not really the retail places, they're very specific uses. Um, and they are also more located in neighborhoods than located in downtown or in this major commercial corridor. So our thought was, we weren't going to put it in the C-one, we were actually going to focus it more in the mixed-use districts, kind of where our activity is, more people, um, and, uh, make that be the place. Um, we do have a new section of the code proposed. Um, the way that Mount code is set up is that we have the districts, we have the uses in a table, and then when we have specific standards for uses, we actually put them in their own code section. And so if you would go kind of in this general vicinity, um, that's where you would see other types of uses and how their provisions are. So we created a new code section, it really only has a couple of standards. One is that, uh, you would have, they're subject to the, um, you know, the business, um, retail limits, so there are state rules about how many you can have, um, and I believe it's one per twelve thousand five hundred. Um, and then the idea of a buffer. Um, and so that's one, probably the area where we can have the most discussion this evening is, it's not required, it's, cities are allowed to have a buffer. Do we want to have a buffer that limits where businesses can go? How big should that buffer be? Um, we did make mapping, uh, we have, the map, I guess, looks like it's cut off, but we have full map. Um, and we actually looked at doing the maximum allowed, and if we do that, it really limits where businesses can be in the community. If we dial the one back a little bit to five hundred and use the same, there are some areas in the community. Um, just like other types of uses similar to this, you can't make it impossible for it to be in the community. So we need to have some places that it could be. It'll still be up to the private property owners, um, and the availability of spaces on whether or not they could actually locate there. Um, but we do need to provide some realistic place, some place in the community that it could happen, um, even if there's not openings for that. Um, so that's why it's important to kind of talk about that buffer element, um, and look at that. Uh, I will walk through the buffer a little bit, and then we can answer questions and have a conversation. Um, so, this is, I wish it was brighter, but that's okay. Do, do, there's my eyes. So this is the maximum, um, if we would do one thousand feet for public and private schools and five hundred feet, um, for parks or daycares, I should stop and step back. So the state, uh, the statute specifically says, public or private schools, you can have up to a thousand feet. And then it's, uh, parks, daycares, residential treatment facilities. I did look up licensure, and I only found three instances of daycares in the community. Um, and so we don't have any residential treatment according to the license, um, database that I can access. Um, and so those daycares were highlighted, and they are included in here. Um, and then we also did all of the parks and the open spaces, the beaches, everything. So one other element that's a little bit interesting is, um, really the statute says places where children will be. Some of our places, you could argue, maybe could or could not be included in this, but it'd be nice to have a reason why, um, we did that. So at this point, we went to the full extent, we used the park map that the city had created about where the parks are in the community, and we included all of those. Um, but it includes things like the Veterans Memorial and the Veterans Memorial Park, all of the little, um, shores in the community, uh, and puts a buffer around those. So this is one thing that is optional for the city. So this one shows the maximum extent, um, staff had been thinking... Staff had been thinking to just do five hundred, oops, I went too far, sorry, to do five hundred. The, what five hundred does, it dials things back a little bit, it does make Mount Marketplace an eligible place. Commerce Place still would not be, Balboa is mostly not completely available. Stone Gate is not, that is also covered by a buffer because of the elementary school. So I also brought with three hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty feet, just to provide other options, or you can not do a buffer, it's not a required element, it's just something that the statute allows us to do if that's what the community feels is important. So, that's not something I can comment on too much, other than providing you the information you need to see the impacts of those different buffers. I chose three hundred and fifty feet just because that's our public hearing notice, you know, we're all customary to three hundred and fifty feet. That's why I chose that number, and two fifty is half of five hundred. There's no more magic than that to those elements. And, so this evening, what we're asking for is, have any feedback? We did already notice, because we do know we're on a timeline for a public hearing next week, so we are hoping that we can resolve whatever issues you may have, what's being proposed, and if you have direction, we can make those corrections so that the council can consider it next week.
So let me clarify something for you.
Yes, sir.
Cannabis retail limit is one per twelve thousand five hundred residents?
Right, which means you would have a retail limit of one.
So we'd have one, because we're below twelve thousand five hundred.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. And that is not, that's set by state statute, and that's not really a zoning-related element. We're just saying that you, even though we allow it in the retail areas, you're not, we're not going to allow more than that retail limit.
And how does that work with rounding of that limit? Are we ever on track for two with our population growth?
Oh.
I don't think so.
What's the next, what's the next step up?
Is it right over, once you're right over twelve thousand five hundred, you get a second one, or is it, once you-
That's a good question, I don't know the answer to-
Okay, but we're not close, so.
No, and I haven't worried about it too much, only from the standpoint of, from a zoning perspective, we just have to do what the statute says. Now, the registration side and the licensing side, which is not, you all, that's the next step in the fall, so I have-
But it's only one, it's only gonna be one business.
Right, and there is, there hasn't, there's been some discussions about how a municipal, if they went that route, factors into it, but there's a lot of still-moving pieces. So, right now, we're only focused on that, but that, they are using that as the standard because that's what's in statute.
Can I make a suggestion on the map? If residential is off the table no matter what, I would just take all those buffer zones off that map because it just clutters it, right? Because you can't have, we can't have it in a residence no matter what, right?
I mean, you could, it's up to you, but yes, you are not going to.
Yeah, we don't have it on there as permitable, right?
We do not, we are not recommending it.
So, having all the buffers on the yellow just kind of clutters up trying to figure out where it, where the buffers would be in the-
So, we can make a revised map, are we all in agreement that we're only really focused on the mixed-use corridor, mixed-use downtown-
That's all we talked about, and that's all that's in the table.
Yes, and that makes sense, so yes, I will, we will make the next map for the council, zoomed in on that area so you can see that area more and see the impact.
Yeah. I think that's good, it cuts some of that noise.
Do we have a buffer for liquor stores?
Do we have a buffer for liquor stores? Is that what you asked me?
Do we enforce a buffer for liquor stores in the same way? Okay. Yeah, because I was looking at this, and I was trying to think about where the municipal liquor store is, and it might fit right in a fluke area of one of the, like, small, if we use this five hundred foot buffer-
The liquor, the current mound liquor store fits in, if we use the five hundred foot.
It would have been approved if we used the same, but it's the, like, one of the only spots that would, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's-
Which is, which again is, I kind of wanted to start at the, do we need a buffer?
Yeah.
And then if we do need a buffer, and I can't answer if we need a buffer or not, but if we want a buffer, then what is the right amount of separation that we would like to have?
Well, I think we need a buffer, and when I did my math, I don't even think five hundred feet is enough around the school or around a daycare. I mean, I do appreciate all the green marks because it does look like literally most everything is covered, you know, within that five hundred foot buffer.
But you, we need to have some areas in town that is not, that are not covered by a buffer.
You have to provide an opportunity.
We have to provide some places.
Yeah, I understand that.
So if we go much-
But I'm saying, when you're, when you're closer to a school or-
Right.
-some of these parks, I don't think five hundred feet is a big enough buffer.
The five hundred is the maximum you can do for a park. Statute does not allow you to go any farther.
Wow.
It's only schools.
They can have up to a thousand, you say?
You can have up to a thousand, but if we do one thousand, then we are-
Getting close to zoning it out.
Correct.
Well, you'd still be able to probably do it-
In downtown.
In industrial, no, not downtown.
Oh, because of Shirley Hills? Well, because of, well, that would probably be a school.
Here's the one thousand.
But can you even do retail and industrial?
We don't have it set up that way.
Yeah.
We do agree, so you're applying to the-
But we have, so cannabis could be in there.
So, this blue, this, this blue is one thousand.
Okay.
So blue means Balboa's pretty much out, and Mount Marketplace is pretty much out, Stone Gate is totally out, and Commerce Place is totally out, which means, that's why we were, what?
Most of, most of Balboa's out.
Yeah, right here. Because this part on the other side, that's outdoor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I was looking at the wrong, okay.
Yep.
And then like the north side of Mount Marketplace, where that vet place is about the only thing.
Correct, and we can't, we can't make it so it's impossible to do it.
Yeah, that traffic on top of the library, good luck.
So you're suggesting that a thousand feet is unreasonable?
I'm sorry. It will make it questionable for statute, would make us open for contesting the zoning application.
Rita, I have, I guess I have a question, a comment, and then a direct suggestion. So, first one is, I just want to make sure we all know what we're doing here. The state has a law pending that we need to react to, right?
It's not pending, it is law.
I'm sorry, there's-
I just want to make sure we're clear.
You're right, there's a change pending for, for the-
The social equity applicants.
Thank you, the derogation for this social equity thing.
What is the change pending?
There, there is now the ability for social equity applicants, soon, to apply to have one of these businesses.
July first, actually.
It's technically, they accept applications, but I think they actually get, like, in July and then in August, they, there's like a lottery system also, so-
Also, my, my point was, this is not something, this is something we have to react to, right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Correct.
And then my comment is actually, it's, after the last meeting, so I've been doing this for seven years, and after the last meeting, I was actually more disappointed than I've ever been after a meeting.
Oh.
So, we talked about two topics, and we talked about racial covenants, and that something might be coming, and, you know, this might affect us, and we'll kind of get to that when we get to that, but what we really got to figure out is the cannabis regulation. I know that's not you, my point is, I hope somebody from the state is watching, and I hope you realize that maybe you got things a little out of order. I think this is, I mean, I just can't believe we're having this conversation in this order. Okay, so I just had to get that off my chest.
And that's fine, but racial covenants is from a nonprofit organization that's doing-
I understand, but it's, I'm just saying, like-
Yeah.
We're putting our energy-
We have to put our energy in not the place that you would like to be putting your energy.
Somewhere, and we're having this conversation, and I just had to get that out there because I hope somebody's watching, it just really bugs me that this is where our priorities are. My direct suggestion is actually to maximize the buffer zones. The five hundred feet is just a little bit longer than the width of the Jubilee parking lot, and so I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we should go twice that from a school before we allow it. It's still allowed in pockets, and the other thing is, I don't know that we want to open up and be the most inviting place to establish business here until we know kind of what this thing looks like.
Okay.
And it's kind of, I've said this on a lot of other topics before, which is, it's easy to back off, but you can't increase things, I've said that for a lot of other topics as well.
Correct. But, my understanding, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, this map has been shared with the city attorney, and it will not meet the standard if we do a thousand feet.
A thousand-foot map won't, but five hundred will.
The thousand feet will not.
Why not?
Because there are not places that you can actually provide or secure space in the community.
Does it have to be a thousand or five hundred?
No, the five hundred is more reasonable.
Okay.
It's the one thousand feet that, because it basically renders Balboa not usable, because that area that is, you can see that little sliver, that's kind of the backside of Balboa, and it's more of an outdoor storage area, it's not an actual part of the building. And then it renders basically the, just the parking lot in Mount Marketplace as a spot, and there's one spot as you enter the community, and that's it.
So, I had a question about the Balboa. Why isn't the Head of the County Trail considered a park? There's more kids riding on that than some of those parks that are on the map. And that would render Balboa useless even at five hundred feet.
Because of the-
It hasn't been designated, it's been designated as a trail, but I understand what you're saying, and don't disagree, that-
Yeah.
You could, but we also, similar to other types-
You said anywhere children are present, there's more kids riding bikes on there-
Yeah, and it's, it talks about more like playgrounds and athletic fields in the actual statute.
Yeah.
And so we were already kind of being more aggressive by, you know, doing the, the Veterans Park and some of those, we kind of went on that element. But I understand what you're saying. We can do that, but again, then we're-
Yeah, it sounds like a thousand feet's not even an option.
That's my understanding from the map review we did with the city attorney.
We can sit here and just boil the ocean on a thousand, but it's kind of a waste of time. What about seven fifty?
Well, we went to, I mean, we could do that, I went to five hundred, because then it would be the same for, but I'm hearing you don't want to do that.
This may be a bit out of left field, and I hate, I apologize, I'm putting you on the spot, but do we use a similar buffer for alcohol and tobacco sales?
No, there's not one.
Right.
And that's kind of where I'm at, if we don't have one for alcohol, I don't know if we should apply the same in this case.
Adult uses.
I'd have to look that up, I do think adult uses do.
Yeah.
But again, that was a similar element, when that got put into place, you couldn't zone them completely out.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Adult uses, so, books, you know, places that sell adult magazines or-
We had this with the tattoo shop, too, I think we went through this.
Strip club, those kind of things.
Gotcha.
And every city has-
Are we required to have a buffer?
I'm sorry, what?
Limit?
What?
Are we required to have a buffer limit?
No. It's an option for cities.
Well, from what I understand-
But if we, if we, if we want to construct an environment that we think is appropriate for our community, what you're saying is, we ought to look at a buffer limit.
I'm saying-
Get that right?
I'm saying that you are able to, under statute, to provide a buffer up to five hundred feet from daycares, residential treatments, facilities, and parks, and one thousand feet from public and private schools. And it's up to you on whether you need the buffer and how much it should be, other than the element of, you can't use the buffer to the point that there is no place in the community that it can go.
Do you know what neighboring communities are putting in buffers in?
No, because everybody, some people have a moratorium, and so they're not actually going to deal with this until later this fall. So the model ordinance just came out in the last, I think in the, when I was putting this together, within like days of me putting this together, was when the first model ordinance came out. So, most cities are not at that stage yet. We hadn't done a moratorium because we weren't concerned about having a lot of these, nor having it show up until next January, but then that changed with the legislative change.
What cannabis-related moratorium did we do? Didn't we do one of some type, just not this?
There was some THC stuff, or you were so-
THC, but not necessarily, some people did actual-
I see.
Cannabis as well.
We had some ordinance work done.
Okay, so staff is recommending, if a buffer limit is set, is to be no more than five hundred feet, correct?
That's where we started with, we can certainly do a map for council that looks at seven fifty and sees the impact. Did I switch the map?
Or we could also just make a proposal that we support no buffer.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
All right, yeah, I'm on the five hundred, I just wanted to make sure.
And is the zoning the same for medicinal cannabis as recreational? And can a shop carry, operate under both licenses?
So, my recollection is that the medicinal element is separate from this conversation today. There is some introduction of the lower potency edibles, oh, no, the medical ones are in here as well. The medical cannabis businesses, other than retail, they're, we're getting, we're treating them the same, that they would be located cultivation, processing, manufacturers, industrial, sales is retail, and we're treating them similarly for both.
Can I also ask a side question just about industrial zoned areas? Am I, I traditionally think of those as ones that we wouldn't generally have a lot of retail, it wouldn't be a good retail shop area. Is, am I wrong about that? Is-
Traditionally, in most communities, I'd say yes.
Okay.
You only have one industrial building, so everything's a little, is, everything's a little different here, so that one's a harder question for me to answer. I think traditionally, we have had retail not in Balboa much, just because you only have the one, and so it's really been focused on, you know, providing a place for that to occur, but I, you, the city can set whatever rules it wants relative to that.
Do we-
Okay, well, let's get, let's get back to the issue of a buffer limit. Should there be a buffer limit?
I, I would tend to know myself.
I would personally tend to know at this point as well.
I have a hard time justifying it. I mean, I think if we already had buffers for similar businesses, it would make perfect sense to be consistent with those, and I have a hard time saying why this is different. It's still a highly regulated product, sales are restricted to children, it's like we're handing out samples, it's all the same as alcohol or tobacco to me. There's going to be one in the city essentially, too, so I-
Also, my biggest concern is if we mess with the buffers, it could look like we're trying to zone it out.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to be required to have at least one, one applicant, application in that process.
So I'm leaning towards buffers, at least for the public and private schools, but is there only three then? Would it be Grandview, OLL, and Shirley Hills?
Yes.
Hilltop's not in there.
Yes.
It'd be good to have a map like this, which just show where the blue is. Oh, so the, just the blue would just be the schools? The blue is the schools. And then it would open up a lot of our commercial areas, that would- Well, some of them. I'm trying to figure out if that's the only blues that are in here.
I actually, just a second.
So what would your buffer dimension be, Jason?
I don't know. I could see a five hundred around schools.
They can't sell to minors anyway, so what is, that comes-
Well, it's, part of it is the optics, folks.
I agree with that, I think if you want to look at what, under regulation, a cannabis looks like, it's the I-70 corridor west of Denver.
Same word?
The I-70 corridor west of Denver.
Yeah, not familiar.
They're everywhere.
It's just everywhere, the road or-
It's everywhere, and, and now they're, they're going out of business because they saturated their own market. Now, I know that's not what we're talking about here, I'm just saying, I don't know if we want to be the most inviting place in the county until we know what this thing looks like.
I mean, the only thing is, like, across from OLL, you wouldn't want four cannabis shops.
This, just, in case you didn't see, here's your school map with five hundred. I had it, I just had a combined map, so I have a singular map.
So it's just those three?
Yeah.
And that's at five hundred feet?
This one's at five hundred, I don't-
I have, why, I did, I think we've saved over, at one point I have, this one might be a thousand.
So even, uh-
Sorry to do it, I just, we might have a thousand here. Yep, that's a thousand.
So OLL-
All right, so what I'm hearing so far is a buffer limit around schools at five hundred feet.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, seeing that, I'm okay.
Just trying to get some focus on the discussion.
So do we want the ice cream shop adjacent to Surfside selling cannabis?
I'm not, I'm not against that.
Honestly, with you do even, well, if you do 500.
No, we do not, I don't think.
I know I feel so, and I think everybody else does too, so I'm just putting it out there.
So with OLL.
This is, this is what happens when we make these, you know, these restrictions is they get pushed right to the limit and then we feel bad about it sometimes.
So this is 500. I would say the ice cream shop's out.
No, no.
Out meaning what?
It's it's out of the buffer.
It's out of the range?
That's what you mean.
Because it's down off Cook's Bay. And why uniquely?
Wait, wait.
We're talking about different ice cream shops.
I'm giving you an example of something that is very possible.
The jet skis next to the.
Oh, you're talking down here?
Yeah.
Do we want that to be the?
I was thinking you guys were talking about this one.
Not Losley Creamery, the one.
Okay, that's why. You and I were talking about.
Commissioner Sampson, what about the, what about the library?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to put scenarios out there about if we want that to be the prevailing order at Surfside. And do we want?
It's sales, it's not.
Sorry? No, this is an old.
This is, this is if we just look at a school.
Just looking at the schools, not looking at the public parks.
And let everywhere else be open.
So did we land on a number, let's maybe, we can do parks and schools separate. Schools, did we land on? Sounds like we want one. Yes?
Among the folks who are no buffer folks, what, how are you feeling about school only buffer?
I think seeing that display, I'm a little more comfortable with it. Again, I think it just gets to be a little tricky when we start to put in all the what if scenarios. And then it leads us to a point where we're zoning out any potential for the 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 application. And so I'm comfortable with this one. I don't know if I would be as comfortable with it around the parks and public places, but I am most comfortable with this.
I I don't, it's not a hill I'm going to die on. I think if we want to do a school buffer, we can. I personally like the idea of a buffer is is kind of. An exercise in making us feel better, but not actually having a practical impact. I don't know if a, if a score, if a store is going to sell to school kids, whether the school kids have to walk 500 feet or 750 feet, that's not the issue. The issue is.
They can just go to the skate park apparently too.
I mean, the issue is that this is regulated, those regulations should be enforced, and I don't know that the difference of 500, 250, 750 feet is really going to make a practical difference.
Are your dimensions here 500 feet?
This one is 500.
500.
Yes, sir.
Whether, I mean, Surfside Park is going to smell like marijuana if people decide to plant the rules and smoke it there. And they're going to get it from somewhere, whether there's a store within 500 feet of a school or not, and I don't know that this is going to change that.
They could be growing it themselves, we don't know.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that, that's a strong man argument.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm hearing focusing in on. A 500 foot buffer around the schools within Mount.
Take over the boat here or?
Am I, am I hearing, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I heard. I don't know if the park side of it got resolved or not, because I heard commentary that there was still some concerns about parks. So it seemed like the school part was at least palatable, made sense, but now if we get to parks, there's still.
I think it's too restrictive with the parks.
You think what?
I think it's too restrictive with the parks. I think, I'm fine with the schools, but I, I, I can't see putting a buffer around the parks. I just wouldn't support that.
We've got too many parks.
I, exactly, I mean, it's just going to.
But most of the parks are residential, so that's kind of a moot point anyway. The two biggest parks is the Auditor's Road one, right, that impacts downtown. And then the Warner Field would impact like where Carrington Coffee is and the industrial area.
There's also the little veterans park on Commerce that affects the Commerce corridor.
And maybe I just need more confirmation too on Sarah, I know, I know it came up, the alcohol usage. Do we have the buffer for schools with alcohol sales?
I'm not aware that we do. We can look.
Because that's another thing that I look at this, when I look at this case, is if we're not applying the same rules for alcohol sales, I don't know how or why we would with THC.
I think it's different.
There is, but it's here and it's, the stigma's got to be, I mean, it's a stigma and I think it's, it's not going away.
So I think it's a little bit different between THC and cannabis. Are they going to be smoking outside the store that they just bought it at? It's not just THC, I don't know, but you can, you can smoke in public.
You can or can't?
You can.
We can.
So if there's a store across the street from a park.
Go to Minnehaha Falls.
Then they can, they can smoke right outside on the street sidewalk right in front of there. And there's nothing to prevent them from walking down 110 and smoking out in public. Right, right next to OLL or a park. It's my understanding is you can't prevent them from smoking in like Surfside Park, right?
I apologize that I don't recall that off the top of my head and I'd have to look what the, where are their limits? There are some limits, but I don't know how it is outside of, like right outside the store.
See, I would almost think that regulations for smoking.
I think, I think it's part of state law now.
Could be, that's, all I've been focused on is the zoning part of it.
I think I read it.
Yeah, I have a property, but maybe. I thought if they can smoke cigarettes in a public park, they can smoke marijuana in a public park.
I can't answer. I honestly have been focused on the zoning, not on use in public parks.
Okay, let's try to get back to the buffer zone and where you'd like to see a buffer zone. And what we have on the board here.
Is 500 feet in just parks, just because I know it was, it was too much to have all of them together, so this is just parks, 500. And you can kind of see, in, these are the parcels, they're kind of circled in green.
Well, I was going back to the schools.
Oh, sorry.
I think we're beyond, I think we agreed.
I was going back to the schools.
Do you want me to go back to the schools, Mr. Good? Yes?
That's where I thought we left off discussion. Maybe I'm wrong. Ma'am?
I just looked up your answer.
Yeah? Yeah, it's, you, it's not, it's prohibited, it has to be at your home, property not accessible to the public where you can smoke.
I believe that you can't drink a beer in a park or in a parking lot or in your car or in the library, you cannot smoke pot.
That's right.
I actually got the opposite.
Yeah.
Well, we know that we don't allow it in schools, so let's talk about. Let's, let's talk about the idea of a 500 foot buffer zone around the three schools. Would somebody like to move on beyond that? Would you like to consider other areas or a different buffer zone? I'm just trying to, trying to get us to come to some conclusion here. Because staff has asked us to make a recommendation to city council regarding the proposed ordinance amendments. And I'm assuming that the other elements of the ordinance are not controversial. They're not something that you've raised as a key point that needs addressing. Am I correct?
Unless you all have concerns about it, then no. But if you have concerns, we can certainly do it to have a conversation about it. The definitions are the definitions that match statute. As close as they can be or tell you to do statute. The use table, we can obviously have a conversation about. Generally, we have to address all of these uses in some form. So it's a matter of whether the permitted places are the right places to permit it. And then, then the biggest question is the buffer and whether we do that or not.
So what you would be seeking is a recommendation to city council relative to proposed ordinance amendments. With a specificity as to buffer zones. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to start things off, the chair would entertain a motion to. Have the planning commission recommend to the city council the proposed ordinance amendments with. And I'm asking someone to fill in the blanks regarding a buffer and a buffer zone around what?
I would recommend a 500 foot buffer zone around public schools.
Okay, we have that as a motion.
I would second that.
And the motion is also the rest of the recommendations. The, for example, the permit, the mixed use and mixed use corridor and.
All of that would be, all of that would be included in our recommendation, yes. Okay, further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, go.
I will just comment, I think that's the closest thing to agreement we have. What has been proposed, I think, is probably the closest thing to getting us all on the same page. And so it's not probably my ideal, but I will vote in favor because I think it's a reasonable compromise.
Thank you for your comment. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. Our custom is if we have a nay, we would, if the commissioner is comfortable, sort of ask for their reason.
Yeah, I don't think it goes far enough and we don't know what this thing is yet, so. It's the same conversation we've had with charter mentals, with ADUs, and a number of other things. It's easy to back off instead of, instead of pour on.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, motion carries. Do you have what you need then, Ms. Reader?
Yes, sir, thank you very much for your attention to this. I think I get you.
Public parks.
I want you though, I didn't say something.
Okay.
Thank you.
The lights are on, we're all illuminated again. Commissioner McNaney, do you have any comments from the council?
I just a couple of things. Obviously, the obstacle be closed on Thursday, but the city obstacle, all people sent by. And then the Panhandlers will be Music in the Park next Thursday, from 6 to 8.
I'm sorry, the what?
Music in the Park.
Oh, okay, the Panhandlers, that's the band?
That's the name of the band?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be honest, with everything we've covered tonight, I wouldn't be surprised.
Thank you.
I got a question for you. So I saw that there was an announcement about there's going to be a new sign crossing going where the water trail is.
Yeah.
Is there some type of announcement coming out about what does that mean legally? Like I know with a pedestrian crossing, we said you have to stop for a person in the crosswalk, but you can't ride a bike across it.
Well, that's a really great question, you know, that's kind of the county doing that area.
But we put an announcement out that there's this new signage coming, but there's nothing saying what does that sign mean for people driving down the street?
And I, and I don't know what that signage is, but I will ask, I'm going to be over at the city tomorrow, ask Jesse. Have about 10 questions about all the road work to ask him. I'll ask him.
And and just, so the Minnesota Public Health Law Center put out a thing that said. That you can't prohibit in a private residence, private property, not generally accessible by public or premises established as an event license for onsite consumption. Starting January 1st, 2025, cities may limit public use in, prohibit on public consumption of alcohol, similar to public consumption of alcohol. May limit smoking, vaping, specific areas where secondhand smoke may come up. And the local government may define what constitutes public place, but cannot include public place as above exceptions. So it's up to the city if you want to limit it in parks.
Like a new.
Based upon the same as alcohol.
Good. Jason, can I just clarify, the sign verbiage you're looking for, is that at the trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
It said there's going to be a new sign that's got a picture of a bike and a picture of a car or a person walking. What does that mean? You have to stop for bikes running across there?
That's a good question, but I will check. That's why I wanted to just make sure we're talking about the same crossing area.
So I, I don't know, is the city taking up whether or not they're going to ban in public parks, smoking cannabis?
We haven't had any conversation on that. That's, we're starting here and we'll end up.
I just curious. I will just say, I pulled some statutes and tried to do some quick legal research and don't hold me to this, but I, that sounds right. What I, what I was able to find is consistent with that.
And again, thank you, Mr. Attorney, because we've had a speaker three looking into all of that and he'll be making a presentation to us regarding all of it.
And I suspect he's going to be much more researched and reasoned than what I just. And it looks like the city of St. Paul's limiting in cannabis and tobacco smoking, the same.
In parks?
In parks?
Yeah.
Really? Wow. Okay, anything else, Cap?
No, that's it, thank you, sir. Happy Fourth, everyone.
Oh, yeah, same to you. Have a safe Fourth.
And just so everyone knows, the fireworks got changed to tomorrow night for Excelsior.
For Excelsior?
Oh, really?
Okay, I didn't see that.
Because of the rain on Thursday. So they're doing Wednesday night.
Any word?
Thank you for mentioning that, you completely would have missed that, okay.
Have you heard of, because I, I didn't see any, but I'm surprised it only.
Bloomington. Bloomington, Excelsior will change, I know. Not yet.
Spirit Lakes is coming up, July 18th through the 20th. As Kathy mentioned, it was McNaney Music in the Park series for July is next week on Thursday. And there was a nice thing that popped up on feeds and so that's all, that's an exciting event. Farmer's Market is active. We're busy with special events, lots of activities to be coordinated at, at public places, lots of fishing contests, lots of special events. Throughout the summer and now coming into the fall, so we're very busy with event planning and also building permit activity is super, super, super high. Lots of projects, it's like we were just saying today, we get two in, we get two out the door and we get seven in. We're extremely busy, so, and then again, reiterating that our offices closed, not only the Federal Holiday, but also on Friday as well.
Thank you. Question for Sarah? Okay, hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Reminder about next month's meeting is rescheduled. It's not on the first Tuesday.
Oh, that's right, it's August 20th because of Night to Unite.
So Night to Unite for folks to, to join in your neighborhood, so thank you.
Okay, see you on the 20th.
I know it was on the agenda, but it still didn't call it out.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thanks everyone, have a happy State holiday, everyone.